Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the April 7, 2010 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the March 3, 2010 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have four public hearings scheduled for this evening, the first of which is a zoning request to amend the Stratford Hall Phase 5 PRD for 9.8 acres located along Charleston Boulevard east of Old Laskassis Pike, Main Street Homes LLC Development. Ms. Ely, good evening.
Thank you Chairman Lamb. Good evening. Good evening, Planning Commission members. The first public hearing this evening is to consider amending the PRD zone for the Stratford Hall development. The Stratford Hall development is located west of North Rutherford Boulevard and east of Old Laskassis Road. The property is currently zoned PRD, and for that PRD zone, a very specific plan was approved by the Planning Commission and the City Council. If the applicant wants to make any changes at all to that approved plan that are considered major changes, they have to go through the legislative process and bring that to you and bring that before City Council for approval. The applicant has informed staff that they would like to make some changes to a portion of this development, a 9.8 acre portion of the overall development. Currently, the area which they're requesting to amend is shaded blue on the map before you. The remainder of the development is shaded orange on the map. The blue area currently will allow a combination of 21 single-family detached lots, four 4-unit attached structures, and one 6-unit attached structure for a total of 43 units in this 9.3 acres, and all of which of those are to be accessed by alleys. The applicant would like, rather than using the one 6-unit attached products and the four 4-unit products, just to use eight 2-unit products in addition to 19 single-family lots. So, the 2-family attached product is something that has already been used in the development. It's not a new product. They're not introducing a new concept. They refer to this product as their garden homes. The units will continue to be rear alley loaded and have the same setbacks as currently permitted in the PRD. I did include some program books in your agenda materials, and you'll have the requests outlined in those program books, so if you have any questions with those, feel free to ask them either before or after the public hearing. Bland Trolinger is here this evening, and Bland, do you have a presentation?
No.
I think, he doesn't have a presentation, but if you have any questions regarding the plan, he'll be able to answer those, and staff will as well. I've put on the screen also a conceptual preliminary plot that shows how the lots will be laid out, with the single-family lots located on the north and eastern side, and the two-family units on the western and southern side. So, if you have any questions either before or after the public hearing, Mr. Adelot or myself will be glad to answer them, but you should conduct a public hearing before considering amending the PRD zone for this property.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Ely or Mr. Trolinger before we open the public hearing? Mr. Young.
Ms. Ely?
Yes, sir.
Tell me about the restrictions on these single-family lots in comparison with the restrictions on the single-family lots presently in the subdivision.
There's absolutely no difference. They're the same, and they're not requesting to amend the single-family product at all except for by reducing it to units. Currently, 21 single-family lots are permitted, detached lots, and they proposing to do 19.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by here, in case you have not attended one previously. We'll open the public hearing in just a second. I'll invite anybody to come forward to the microphone that would like to speak. We ask you to come forward, state your name, give your address. Hold your comments to no more than three minutes, if you would. Please make all your comments or questions to the Planning Commission and not members of the audience. If you do have questions, we'll make note of your questions and answer those at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Good evening. My name is Bill Lean. I live at 1420 Veranda Circle, and I live in Stratford Hall. And I'm here tonight as the board president for the HOA for Stratford Hall and the current property that's been developed. The reason I'm here tonight is I wanted to share with the Planning Commission the fact that we have had an ongoing discussion with Main Street Homes, Bob Parks, Jerry Benifield, and Bland since back in January. They informed us in January of their plans, got us involved, and we've had continuous dialogue with them, going over different questions that we had, different concerns we've had. Once we felt comfortable, what we did in February, on February 11, to be specific, we held a homeowners' meeting, invited Bland to come to that meeting and to present what he had presented and reviewed with us, and he did that. And following that, we opened it up to questions from the audience, from the various homeowners that were there. There was a lot of good dialogue that went on between the homeowners and Bland and the board members. At the end of that, the board walked away believing that we had the majority of the homeowners in favor of this change. We believe that this change, in particular going to the garden homes, they are single-story. We believe single-story for the type of homeowner that lives in our community is a desired product. We've noticed and observed that when our townhomes, the single-story townhomes are on the market, they don't last very long, sometimes a week, sometimes a day. The two-stories seem to last longer. I think it's got to do with a community that has elderly, quite a few of them, and they prefer single-story products to move around. So, between that and the fact that it's more marketable, we think that it's going to be to our advantage to get this final phase built out so that we have an opportunity to have an entire enclosed gated community as was originally planned. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Young, being elderly, he might want to...
Would you call me when one comes by?
Would anybody else like to speak?
My name is Paul Stampley. I live at 1926 Scarlet Drive, and I'm a resident in the subdivision. And I would just like to ask that in the event that the developer was not able to complete the project, are we covered by a bond?
Thank you, sir. We'll handle that. Anybody else? Okay. Close the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Trolinger or the staff?
So, we just had the one question, I believe?
Yeah. Mr. Adelot, can you address the question about the bond?
The question is if the developers are unable to complete the project, will they be covered by a bond? The streets within the Stratford Hall development are private streets. When the plat is recorded, we will not require that a performance surety bond for the streets be posted. We may require some performance surety for things like the sewers, which will be public, things like the water lines, which will be public, and possibly some of the drainage, if it is public drainage. But the streets, we won't be. However, we will not issue any building permits until the streets are built, at least to the standard required for the issuance of a building permit, and likewise for the water sewer, et cetera. And we will certainly hold up building permits if the infrastructure is not constructed.
Okay. Mr. Stampley, if that didn't answer your question completely, if you could stay after the meeting is adjourned, I'm sure the staff would be glad to get with you and go over all that, okay?
I want to just add a little bit more. A standard subdivision where the streets are public, we have adopted with a new subdivision regulations a requirement that they be built to asphalt before they record the plat, and then, and only then, when they record the plat, would we require there be any performance surety, and that would be for things like sidewalks and the final course of asphalt. So, that's not that much different here. These are just private streets that the city has no ownership of and no... Our bigger mechanism in any event will be our ability to withhold permits if the building permits, if the infrastructure is not built as required.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adelot. Any other questions or comments? There are none, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Second public hearing this evening is a zoning change request to amend the West Lawn PUD for 206.75 acres located west of Veterans Parkway, Whole Robb Development is the developer. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again. The next item is similar to the previous item in that they are requesting to amend the current PUD zone, not to change that PUD zone to another zoning district in the city of Murfreesboro. The property, the subject property is known as the West Lawn Development, and the total area is 206.75 acres. The applicant, or the PUD property has a specific plan that was approved for it for West Lawn. And again, if the applicant would like to make any changes to that specific plan approved as part of the PUD, and that's considered a major amendment, then they have to go through the legislative process. So, the applicant would like to amend a 55-acre portion of this West Lawn development. What they would like to do is make some changes just to the residential portion of it. Currently, the PUD zone allows a mixed-use development with some commercial, multifamily residential, single-family residential detached products, and then the overall development. The applicant wants to make some changes to the setbacks of the attached product and to the, and would like to offer a detached garage option, which currently is not allowed under the current PUD. There are, you have before you the program book that was included as part of this amendment. The amendments are outlined on pages 38, 39, 40, and 41 of the program books. All the other pages in that book are the same as they were approved back in 2008, or 2007. Development had begun on this site in 2008, but it was stalled. Currently, there's a builder interested in moving forward and building the single-family product. So, the changes that are proposed have also been outlined in a letter from Randy Caldwell, and that was included before the cover sheet of your program books, and that outlines specifically what the changes are. The number of lots permitted in this development are not changing. They're keeping the exact same number of lots, and the lot size is not changing at all. The changes really are just focused on offering that detached garage option and reducing the garage setback from 40 feet to 35 feet. Also, as part of the changes, after this PUD was approved, the city adopted a new code that required a minimum of five-foot setback to the side property lines. They've changed that in the books to make that consistent with the current requirements because we will require a minimum of five feet, not the three feet that was currently, or that was previously approved, so they cleaned up that part of the language. Also, the applicant would like to offer an option to have, on corner lots, to have a driveway on the side, the minor street, and previously that wasn't permitted in the program books. So, Randy Caldwell is here, and he's going to go through the changes with you. If you have any questions for Mr. Caldwell or any staff, we'll be able to answer them before or after the public hearing. Mr. Caldwell? Let's get his project up here on the screen. Don't you have something up here? Oh, no. Okay, that's somebody else. Okay.
I didn't plan on doing a PowerPoint presentation here, so, thank you, Margaret Ann, and she did a very good job of just explaining all the changes, and I think at the workshop we went through those. I know there was a little bit of question as far as how the product sat on the property, and I included some attachments in the pattern book that weren't in there, so you didn't have to kind of fish around for those to show how this detached product works. But again, that is primarily what's driving this amendment to the public, as Margaret Ann said, cleaning up some setback language and reducing that front garage setback on there. But I do have Mr. Kim Kimmens, who's with Whole Robb, with me today to represent them, and I'm really here to answer any questions or clarify anything that I can, either now or after the public hearing is closed.
Any questions for Mr. Caldwell? I know we discussed it somewhat at our work session that we had. Mr. Young?
I was just going to ask. Mr. Caldwell, the number of lots is not changing.
Correct. We're not adding or taking away any lots. This product fits within the lot widths that we had established with the original approval.
So, they're not asking for more density?
No, sir.
Or more houses?
No, sir.
Your references to Beasley Road might need to be changed.
Pardon me?
Your references to Beasley Road...
Oh, that got changed, yeah. I forgot about that, yeah. It's changed since we got this original approval.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Caldwell before we open the public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you.
This time, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this proposal. Anybody at all? Seeing no one come, I'll close the public hearing. If there's no questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, the changes in this are, I don't want to use the word minor, but they are minor, and these are things that have been worked out in a study session, in a work session with this commission and developer and staff for a pretty good while. It's been under study, and I think that all the issues really are worked out, and I think it merits our approval, so I'll move for approval.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye. All opposed. Motion carries. The next item, third public hearing today, is the zoning request to rezone approximately 1.5 acres from commercial local and RS-15 to commercial highway, and 16.77 acres from RS-15, RS-12, and commercial fringe to a PRD. Autumn Wood Place Partnership is the developer. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again. The subject property is located south of Old Fort Parkway, just west of St. Andrews Drive. The property is currently a total of 16.77 acres, and the request is actually a two-part request, and I'll go over that in just a few moments. Properties to the south are zoned RM16, and to the east are zoned RM16, and there's some apartments in that area. The property to the east is zoned CF, and that's fringe commercial district, and there's, it's a commercial cul-de-sac. Properties to the west are part of the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, and to the south there's a PRD, Planned Residential District, single-family subdivision, so there's residential uses to the west. Also, to the west are some apartments that are zoned RS-15. Those apartments currently don't conform to the zone, but they are lawfully established as they were developed before they were annexed and zoned RS-15. Initially, the applicant came before you with a request to rezone the 16.77 acres to PCD and PRD. That's changed a bit. The first part of this request is to rezone this area shaded blue in the map, which is 1.5 acres from its current CL, local commercial district, and RS-15, single-family residential district, zones to CH. The properties along the northern and the eastern property lines of that 1.5 acres is zoned CH, and the property is located along a highway, so a CH, commercial highway zone would not be inappropriate for that 1.5 acres. The remaining parcels shaded orange, the five parcels, are currently zoned RS-15, CF, and RS-12. The applicant would like for you to rezone those properties to PRD, Planned Residential District, to allow them to develop with some multifamily residential units. The second part of this request is 16.77 acres. I would like to point out that as part of the plan, .74 acres is being requested to be dedicated as public right-of-way. That'll provide access to the commercial lot and the multifamily lots from Old Fort Parkway. I would also like to point out that the multifamily lots would have access to St. Andrews Drive and Old Fort Parkway only. They will not be able to access any of the adjacent single-family residences or the adjacent multifamily residences. The PRD portion of this request would allow 288 multifamily apartment units for a density of 17.17 acres, or dwelling units per acre. I did include a program book in the agenda materials which outlines the request in its specifics. If you have any questions about that, staff will be able to answer them before or after the public hearing. There are 12 three-story buildings, which will total 288 multifamily apartment units. Mr. Gunther is here this evening, and I believe he has prepared a presentation for you, and so if you will allow him, he'll give you the presentation. If you have any questions after his presentation or after the public hearing, staff will be glad to answer them for you.
Mr. Gunther, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, Planning Commission members, and thank you, Ms. Ely. We have been working carefully with staff on this project, and I'll just highlight a few things, and then wanted to mention that Mr. Ray and Mr. Elliott are also here this evening, if you have questions of them. One of the things we worked very hard on this site to obtain was we have more than 50 percent open space, and wanted to make sure there was an amenity package in the project that would do warrant for the type of apartment complex we're proposing. That includes a playground facility, volleyball courts, several pocket parks, and a clubhouse and a pool facility adjoining the clubhouse. We also worked hard at working on the architecture and took a 300, what I call a 360-degree approach to the architecture. We're committing to 80 percent brick or masonry product on the entire facade and all sides, and the architect worked carefully with Ms. Logan and other staff members to make sure that we were creating something that would fit with the surrounding area. And then here again, here are some pictures of the amenity facilities. These are comparable, the same type of pool and the same clubhouse that the developer has built in other projects that he's proposing for this site. The other thing that we wanted to do was make sure that if you look at the project on the north side and Highway 96, that we'd have good egress not only for the multifamily and the commercial in our lot, but adjoining properties. Now, there's a lot of discussion to make sure that we would create a public right-of-way that would allow full access for all the adjoining parcels. And finally, the commercial lot size was also something we wanted to make sure that we were providing something that was going to facilitate several uses that may come along, realizing we didn't have a specific plan in mind right now. We did want to ask for a commercial highway instead of a planned development approach because we don't have the specifics of architecture and the site design as we do for the multifamily. So, with that, I'll just open for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Question.
Mr. Young.
Mr. Gunther, is the street that runs through the center of this, is that a public street or private street?
That would be a private street. The public street ends after you pass by the commercial lot on the north side, and you come to a cul-de-sac turnaround that is designed to facilitate emergency vehicles, and then at that point it would become a private street until it connected back with St. Andrews.
Will there be a gate there?
There are gates proposed at both egress points into the project, yes, sir.
And since you have control of the proposed commercial highway lot, you will make sure a buffer is in there between your project and your project?
Correct. There's a specific buffer called out between those two parcels.
Ms. Ely?
Mr. Gunther, if you look on page six of the program book, public street, does it border up against the property that's next to this, or is that, looking where the yellow line, is that public street all the way up through there? Is there a private run through there?
Let me get the program book and look at the...
Can you answer that for us, Ms. Adelot?
Yes, I can, and this has been a point of a lot of discussion on the part of the planning staff and the applicants. And also, it has involved the owner of that property to the west. Right now, there's a sort of a parcel that had some poorly defined ownership, and that was between the two parcels, and it's that long strip, and it has the appearance of being a right-of-way, but it's not. It never was a right-of-way, and there was a public right-of-way. What this program book calls for is starting at Old Fort Parkway, Highway 96, along that old right-of-way or that old strip, there will be a public right-of-way until you get to the cul-de-sac turnaround, the bulb out. And at that point, from there, further south will be the private streets of the apartment complex. But at that cul-de-sac, it will, and northwards to 96, that part will become a public right-of-way, dedicated as a public right-of-way, and it will be built to city street standards, and it will be available for access to that adjacent property, just like any other public right-of-way would.
And does the public right-of-way, looking on that page six, like where the RS-15 demarcation is there, how far up, I know you said the bulb, but is it like the beginning of the bulb, or...
Actually, all of the bulb will be part of the right-of-way, and what you're seeing within the drawing, the heavy yellow line, that's, well, you've got the really, really heavy line that's the boundary of the parcel.
Right.
Then you've got, on the other side, you've got a heavy line that's, I think it is, represents the proposed right-of-way line, and you can see how it goes around, but you'll see how it's got openings for the access drives into the apartments. But if you follow that curve around, that's basically where the property line would be. The cul-de-sac itself, the right-of-way will be 100 feet in diameter, but the street, the road surface will be about 87 feet in diameter, so there'd be a distance of about seven feet behind the curb to the property line, and that's very typical of public streets.
This is something that we considered before when we looked at this project. When was it, a year or two ago?
It wasn't quite a year ago, but it's getting closer, and a lot of our discussion at that time was how was this going to be dealt with, and we urged that the applicants clarify the ownership and obtain it, if they could, and actually, I ultimately urged it to become a public right-of-way because I'm concerned about the apartments and how they're owned, and also that undeveloped land in behind. I didn't want to create a landlocked parcel that the only way to get to it would be to tear down one of the apartment buildings. This plan offers the ability to go behind it with a public, with a driveway, so that parcel can be plotted separately if they can get sewer to it.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to achieve, and I think they've done it, I think they've accomplished it.
Any other questions for Mr. Gunther?
One more, Mr. Chairman. The proposed commercial highway is consistent with zoning along Highway 96?
Absolutely it is. The property immediately adjacent to it and to the east is zoned commercial highway. The property to the southeast, where the Middleton's Electric is, is zoned commercial highway, and the property directly across the road is also zoned commercial highway.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther.
Thank you.
There's no further questions at this time. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak either for or against this proposal. Anybody at all? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. I do want to commend the developer in this regard because the city was very, and the Planning Commission was very concerned about this strip of land that's in question, and I know that was a touchy situation for you guys, but you worked with the city on that to resolve that, and you did a lot on your own, of course, too, but thank you for doing that because I think it clears up a lot of questions out there.
Chairman Lamb, I want to reinforce what you said. The applicants throughout this project, they and their team have been very willing to go the extra mile to solve that kind of problem. Also, I want to tell them and publicly state that I'm very impressed with the amenity package on this project. One of the things that Mr. Gunther mentioned, but he didn't elaborate on, with this project, there would be more amenities than your typical apartment complex, and what they tried to do is to put a good complement that will be beneficial to the people who will live there, although there's a little bit higher density. They would have been able to have achieved that density if this property was zoned RM16, just like the property adjacent to them on St. Andrews. But their difference is they've created a density, an amenity package where they could have achieved the same density if they had had the same zoning. They chose to go the planned development route, and I think it's going to be a very good development. They've got good architecture, we've looked at that. We will be coming back to us with a site plan for the final tweaking if it's ultimately approved, but I'm very pleased with the ultimate package here.
Thank you, Ms. Adelot. There's no other questions or comments, we're ready for a motion.
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye. All opposed.
I'm one abstaining from voting. I may have a potential conflict.
One abstention, the motion is passed. The final public hearing this evening is a zoning ordinance amendment to amend Section 24, Article 4, H1, Heavy Industrial 1, excuse me. 24, Article 4, H1, Heavy Industrial 1, excuse me, Historical District 1, Historic Zoning Commission is applicant. That's a little bit of conflict right there, I think, Ms. Traylott. Ms. Ely?
Thank you very much. The last public hearing this evening is to consider some amendments to the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance. The amendments have been included in your agenda packets for your review. The Historic Zoning Commission brought to staff's attention that they were interested in having more input on matters involving the appearance of public property that's located within the Murfreesbrows East Main Historic District, also known as the H1 District, as Mr. Lam stated earlier. So what we have proposed, with guidance from our legal staff, is to include some language in Section 24, Article 4 of the zoning ordinance, which essentially states that the Historic Zoning Commission would have input, have an opportunity to provide written input and review any changes to public property, public rights of way, or easements within the Historic District in Murfreesboro. The paragraph which is being proposed has been included in the staff comments and also as an attachment. I've also got on the screen the proposed language, proposed ordinance, as suggested by our legal staff. So to make any sort of modification to a zoning ordinance, it's essential that we hold a public hearing, and that we get a recommendation from you, Planning Commission, and have that another public hearing at City Council. So we'd like your input regarding this matter, and if you have any questions for staff, either before or after the public hearing, which you're about to hold, we'll be able to answer those for you. But essentially, this would provide an opportunity for the Historic Zoning Commission to provide written input regarding improvements to public property within the H1 zone.
Any questions for Ms. Ely? Thank you, Ms. Ely. If not, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody at all, once again. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Just one question, Ms. Traylott and Ms. Ely. The Historic Zoning Commission will be afforded an opportunity to review and provide written comments on such proposed action prior to its initiation, talking about the items that are covered under this. What does that mean?
All right, before they stick a shovel in the ground and start digging, it gives a chance for them to have a chance to review it, and offer their written comments.
But that's not, that's not an approval process, per se?
No, no, it's not. And I'm going to be very frank with the Planning Commission, that I think there is some trepidation on the part of the staff about this. The things that we're talking about may involve things that may have public safety ramifications, like the brick sidewalks that were discussed earlier this year and late last year, where I think that there were some owners who were a little bit concerned, unhappy, displeased, anxious about the city removing old brick sidewalks and replacing them with concrete. And from the standpoint of the city, we were seeing an unsafe situation that needed to be addressed, and it'd be addressed in a long-term way. Residents appealed to the Historic Zoning Commission, and the Historic Zoning Commission had some concerns about what they viewed as something that contributed to the historic area. We realize that there are things that may need to be reconstructed, dug up and reconstructed, but we also realize that the Historic Zoning Commission has a very important job to do in our community, and it adds to our community quite a bit. And if we have time, and it's not an emergency situation, we feel that maybe it would be best to let them have a chance to provide some written communication. And it's very likely that if it's, they can add something to the project, it can be incorporated into it, and they can maybe improve the project for the betterment of the community. And if that can be done, we would be very wise to stop by the Historic Zoning Commission and got their input. I don't think that this is intended to become something that's going to be a difficult review process, but I think it's something that Historic Zoning Commission wants, so that they know about it, they can have a chance to alert us about some of the ramifications, and we hope that the project and the community will be better. Mr. Ives, you may have some comments, you've been involved in some of the drafting and some of the discussions about this as well.
I have been involved a little bit, although actually Ms. McGannon has had the primary work on this project. But I do know that, certainly if there's a broken water main, we'll go fix it, the city staff will go fix it without waiting to decide whether, you know, to consult with whether or not old asphalt or bricks should be dug up. If it's, if there's something that has to be fixed, it'll be fixed immediately. But it, there is certainly a line between the public infrastructure that the city controls and then the private property that is, has always been considered to be subject to the historic zoning limitations. A number, a lot of street work has been done, a lot of sidewalk work has been done, utility pole work, other utility work has been done in the area over the years that has had very little, if any, prior consultation with Historic Zoning Commission. And this last issue that did come up about the sidewalks reflected that, I think that it is, perhaps there are, even though it is public infrastructure, and I don't think that the city senior staff is going to want to give up control, there has been an indication of a willingness to discuss these issues and see if, both economically and safely and with all the considerations, that accommodations can be made to the historic aspects. So, and again, I don't know that this, the legal department isn't necessarily endorsing this language. We've worked with the planning, I mean with Historic Zoning Commission, to come up with language that essentially to help them write their proposal. So this is not necessarily the proposal of city staff, although I don't know of any staff that's opposing it, but this is Historic Zoning Commission's request, especially at this stage, and I would expect that, you know, there may be comments by other city staff at the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, pardon me, at City Council, if Planning Commission does recommend that this go forward.
Chairman Lam, I.
Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, as you all know, I'm on that commission, probably the least qualified to be on it.
Oh, no.
There's a lot of knowledgeable people.
No, we want you on there.
There's a lot of knowledgeable people on that commission, and this came about because of the sidewalks, but after that came up, it became evident to the commission that, and you can tell from the language, it's in non-emergency situations, and no one on the commission wanted to stop that sort of thing from happening when you had an emergency situation. And they didn't want to subject the city to any sort of approval process. They merely wanted to be able to comment on things that are going on in the Historic District. And they're the experts in that field, and, you know, and I thought that was very reasonable that we do that. And I will say that Mr. Lyons has, prior to this adoption, has been very willing to bring things to the Historic Zoning Commission, and expressed a willingness to do that on his own, and he's to be commended for that. But the Historic Commission's not trying to create some burdensome approval process on the city, that their wishes are just to be able to review these things that are going on, and only in non-emergency situations.
Chairman Lam. One question that I have is that the input or recommendation that would be coming from the commission, would that go to city staff for their review, or to city council for their review, or both? Because if it's just going to, well, if it's just going to staff, then, I mean, I just, my question, it would seem like it should go to council and staff, but that...
Well, Mr. Halliburton, some things, and some things really, because of our form of government, we are operated by city manager. And a lot of things that may never get to the city council, he has responsibility for doing, so it may not ever have any need to go to the city council. Some of it may very quickly be forwarded to the department head that is taking the action. Certainly, the city manager will be kept abreast of it, because it is his responsibility to manage the government. But the things that do require the city council's approval, more than likely, they'll be having the recommendation of Historic Zoning Commission accompany. But if it doesn't require the council's approval, there's no reason for it to ever go, and it won't go. It may just only be with Mr. Lyons, or the department head, or the utility provider that's initiating the action. And I think, Mr. Ives.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah, I concur. Yes, and to some extent, even the things that the city manager is responsible for, that to some extent, without council approval, to another extent, they have to be paid for. And unless it's a relatively small project, council has to approve the expenditure, so if there's, you know, some, you, council may approve a sidewalk repair project as part of an overall maintenance project without approving the specific, the nuts and bolts of each piece of sidewalk that's going to be taken out. So that, just to use the example that had come up, there might not have been necessarily a need to go back to council when, if the proposal had been made to the Historic Zoning Commission that sidewalks be removed, that brick sidewalks be removed. I would have to say, however, that I expect that had the amount of, you know, had resistance been voiced to that proposal of the kind that came up after it was done, I would be pretty surprised if the staff involved didn't at least stop for a bit, talk some more, and go to whatever additional body might be appropriate, be it Planning Commission, or City Council, or both, rather than just charging ahead, knowing that there's opposition to something, and it might ultimately be decided that removal of bricks and replacement of concrete is what we need to do, and we're sorry that people don't like it, but it's necessary. And there may have been another course of action taken.
And that's kind of my point in my question.
Yeah. I guess I would have to say that to some extent, it's going to, it'll depend, and...
And we have, we have an example, a real-life example that may be very relevant. With the Manny Avenue reconstruction project, the engineer will be taking, if he had an R-8, will be taking that project through the Historic Zoning Commission for the portion that's in the Historic District. And basically, I think he's already done that, hasn't he?
He has, and I missed that meeting.
Right, and basically, at some point in the future, he'll be asking the city council to award a construction bid, and I would expect he will point out, and this has been before the Historic Zoning Commission, and has, they have provided positive written comments.
Right. I would think normally, it wouldn't be going to the Historic Zoning Commission the day before where we've got a bobcat coming to tear up bricks.
Right.
That, so there's going to be opportunity, I think, for comments to be aired at the appropriate level and to the appropriate parties, so, I mean, I think that'd be very unlikely.
And this is my last comment, you would hate for this to be adopted and then not used in a situation where it may need to be used, so we just want to make sure we're going to adopt something that we know how it's going to be used and when it's going to be used, because then you're going to end up with the same result that you had less than a year ago, because there was no input.
And, Mr. Halliburton, I will take your comments and questions back to Ms. McGannon, and also Joseph and I, and Ms. McGannon will look at that. Every exercise in drafting can be done better, and it may be that we need to tweak this a bit, and we'll certainly look at that and see if there needs to be more detail put into that.
Thank you.
Good points, Mr. Halliburton. Any other questions? No, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item 5A, the South Point Business Campus has been deferred, but we have had a late dismissal, which we will consider tonight, that being Lot 16, Waterstone Office Park, First National Bank of McMenville is the applicant, it's a final design review. So, Ms. Logan.
Good evening.
Yeah, Ms. Logan, good evening.
Thank you. I'm going to take us real quick to get to the screen, so I can get the architectural plans up. Thank you for considering this tonight under other business, and this item has been before you previously under initial design review, and has also been to the separate DRC Commission for their initial design review. And pending your approval tonight, they would like to proceed forward this coming Monday with final design review through the DRC, and your approval tonight is required for them to move forward with that step. And if you'll recall, this is Lot 16 of the Waterstone Office Park, which is located over at Gateway Boulevard, or Gateway Drive, and right next to or across from our new hospital, which will be opening here in a few short months. This project, the site plan itself, has been reviewed by staff once, and we would like that any approvals tonight be subject to our engineers having final approval. We've worked through most of the site issues, we feel like the site plan itself is in good order in terms of the site design, the layout, and the circulation. I do want to make sure that our environmental engineer has final say-so on the stormwater qualities, I think that they're in good shape, but I want to make sure that he has the opportunity to provide final approval of that product, of the proposal, and also that our city horticulturalist has final approval over the landscaping, although she has provided a couple sets of comments to the landscape architect, and I think they're working to try to get everything finalized in terms of that, nothing in your comments that should be, anything that's not, that can't be overcome. If you'll recall during the initial design review, really, the discussion of the project centered on the architecture of the building and the colonnade that comes out, if we could go to the screen, you'll see the colonnade that kind of protrudes out to the front, that is a covered walkway that is really the entry point into the building. There was some discussion over the location of the colonnade and how it projects out, and how from westbound traffic going down Gateway, it would preclude the wall sign that is shown on there, which is shown on the building. Of course, the applicants have gone and located the monument sign, they relocated the monument sign out front to what they felt was a more prominent area, so that the monument sign would be visible as you travel along Gateway. However, staff still is concerned that the colonnade does block the wall signage, and that there could be repercussions dealing with landscaping and some site design issues as we go forward. We just want to make sure that everybody is fully aware that if there are issues with the signs later on, and not being able to see those on the building, that we don't have to come back later and come back to you and try to ask for changes to the plans or reduction in landscaping to be able to see the wall signage. So we wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to bring that point up again here during the final design review. Also, staff has talked with the applicant about the top of the colonnade feature, if, I know that there's been some mixed discussion on that, and the gap in between there almost kind of creates like a tooth effect, but, and the architect has consulted with staff and is going to re-study that one portion, that one feature, and try to come up with an alternative there on the top, and just look at some maybe other options. If you would like to give your approval tonight on that, we interest to work with staff on that, we would ask you to do that, or we could bring that one feature back to you after they've had an opportunity to study it. But they did commit to staff to try to study that and see if there's something they can do across the top there where that one feature is, that's kind of seemed to be a hang-up during the initial design review. Also, this item, if you'll recall, does not meet the requirement for separation from parking to building because of the drive-through in the rear, and the Board of Zoning Appeals did grant a variance for this at the meeting, at their meeting on March 31st. There have been several bank projects in the Gateway area that have had to go through this same process, so it's not unprecedented. Other than that, we feel like this plan is in good order, and we would be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and also the landscape architect, the architect and the engineer here tonight, if you have any further questions of them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Any questions for Ms. Logan or the design architect?
I do have a question. I would like for Mr. Lowen to confirm that he has counseled his client on the ramifications of obstructing visibility for the wall sign that fronts on Gateway Boulevard, so that after this is built, I can in good con- after this was built, I can in good conscience say I tried.
We did bring up the question to the owner, and it was also an idea of sliding the monument sign closer to the drive as a better way of showing signage to the building, so that sign on, actually against the building, would not be the main sign. They were comfortable with that. We did mention that if it would make them more comfortable, or staff more comfortable, to move the sign to the opposite side of the windows, basically, it would have the same aesthetic to the building, so that there would not be a question in the future for any movement or non-visible sight to that, that that was something we could do as well. It's a, the idea is the tower piece of architecture becomes somewhat of an iconic signage to the building, and that sign becomes secondary due to the monument.
Okay. Did that satisfy you, Ms. Ritalat?
Well, if he's conscious, it's fine. And as verbal as I have been on this issue, I will be in, have good conscience. I do want to suggest that part of what's caused this is the fact that that covered walkway projects substantially in front of the rest of the building, and I think that's been part of my concern. However, I'm going to defer to you all as the Planning Commission as to what you all think on it. I think that's going to be a little bit problematic. I will point out that even with the, unless that sign is moved, that you will, actually, before you can see it past the covered walkway, you have already passed the driveway into the, to the lot, if you're traveling westbound on Gateway Boulevard. So before you will see the sign on the building that fronts on Gateway Boulevard, you will have passed it, so moving the ground some will help. But I'm, I am concerned about that. And part of what I'm also concerned about, if they don't, if they don't make provisions for it now, one day, the manager will attend a board meeting, and the board will say, your branch is not performing well. And he'll come back, resolve to do something about the performance of his branch, and the first thing he'll look at is the poles, and he's, no wonder I'm having problems, they can't see my sign. So he will tell the landscaper, cut the trees. And the trees will be cut before we know what happened, and it's because, well, I was trying to improve the visibility to my sign. Well, the problem is, you couldn't see it because you built part of your building in front of your sign, and you weren't paying attention to what you were doing. And it's easy at this point in the game to say, well, that's not going to happen, but ladies and gentlemen, I've been planning director long enough for that to have happened to me several times, and I would like to avoid it in the Gateway if we can. And if the owners know it, and they're not, and they are counseled enough that they're not going to be cutting down the landscaping just to improve visibility to their sign, I can live with it. It's not my sign, and I have tried.
Well, I think your point has gone on record more than one occasion now, so thank you for doing that. Any other questions, Mr. Ritalat or Ms. Logan?
I would like to note that we do have a copy of the color board here tonight for you on the east side, and I'll be glad to pass it around.
It's okay, we can see it.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I'm just going to note that it's the colors that are indicative of the rest of the campus. If you recall, part of the beauty of the Waterstone campus, what we're really trying to create out there in conjunction with the developer, is cohesiveness, not necessarily through building design, because we want the buildings to be individual, but create cohesiveness through material selections, furnishing selections, light fixtures. One of the things even here, they had originally proposed acorn lights, and they've gone back to a different type of light fixture that is found throughout the development. It's just those kinds of items that really help to unify that development and really try to promote the campus feel that we're trying to create there around the hospital.
Okay. Any questions? Now we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval.
So, staff comments?
Set to all staff.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Staff reports another business, anything under that section, Ms. Ritalat?
No, sir.
Any other business needing to come forward this Planning Commission tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.